Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Idman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderwoman Arberster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, takes us down to our city administrators' report.
We've got an updated list at your seat. Draw your attention to item six. We had this come in today. We didn't have time to bring this to the board officially. What we have is, our engineers have told us and we have researched it, PVC pipe is becoming very scarce. And we have a waterline project that's coming up. If we don't buy it now, we probably won't have it this summer. That will delay the waterline installation and it'll delay our street paving. So we've got to get it now. So we have contacted the, we've contacted three different companies. One company had the pipe on hand. It's at a normal price. We've gone ahead and asked them to reserve it for us and we will go ahead and order it, say, deliver and we'll put it somewhere on site.
Wise move. What about all the fittings?
Right now, there's no problem with the fittings, the plastic that they're concerned about.
Fittings? I don't have a problem, I'm telling you, anything plastic. Electrical boxes, wire, everything, plastic.
Yeah. So, well, if we wanted to get the pipe to start with, if we, you know, if we get a list from the engineer on what we need in the way of fittings, then we'll start getting that as well.
Yeah.
That's probably a good idea, so. Item seven, is there anybody who would like to be on a committee to interview for the tourism director? Okay. All right. We'll start interviewing, I've gotten, I've got four applications in. We'll see if this group, I'm gonna narrow that down, just a couple of interviews at this point and then we'll go from there. Sarah Menard's gonna help us out from Tourism Advisory Council. I'll talk to TTC Tuesday, see if they wanna, if somebody from there wants to participate. Hire a tourism director. Any questions about anything else on my report?
Very good, thank you. Thank you, and I did do Happy's evaluation and we sat and talked and everything y'all expressed, I expressed with him. We cleaned it up, made it look really nice.
She's still here.
He helped me with my boxes, he helped pack them. He wrote on, wrote on what was in there and we, you know.
And I did, also, I went to, this morning, I was in town today, so I took it upon myself to go over and talk to the commissioners, you know, because I hadn't been there in a while and I asked them about how they get along with Happy and they're just, everything's good. They're gracious and they know, they really wanna know why he's, they know why he's got his name, Happy.
Can we coach him a little bit on jaywalking? Mike brought that in.
Another one, you caught him again?
It's a problem.
Well, he didn't get a score on safety, I got it.
I was gonna call for closed session, but there's no need.
Thought I'd get out there, Mike.
Very good.
Takes us to our staff reports, David?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You've got my staff report there. There'll be a parent's question meeting Monday evening, few COAs on the agenda.
Our historic preservation event is this weekend, so that's the Shippel grant that we got last year, coming to fruition this year. So tomorrow, there'll be a classroom session down at Audubon's and then Saturday, a window restoration event at 195 Market. And then Sunday, a siding and trim restoration event down at the Moses Austin property. There's about 20 to 25 folks signed up tomorrow. It's also available via Zoom. And then there's approximately 10 signed up for each day, Saturday and Sunday. I'd hoped, if you remember, we limited it to 15, so I'd hoped for the full 15 and maybe we will end up with that, but right now, it's about 10 each day. Local, and I shouldn't say local, but from Hannibal, preservationist Bob Yap is coming down. He runs the Belvedere School of Historic Preservation. He'll be running both those sessions on Saturday and Sunday, so, good event.
Do you think are the tomorrow's classroom sessions, I know they're gonna be Zoom, are those going to be recorded?
Hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
I am hopeful to record them. They will certainly be broadcast. Toby may even broadcast one Facebook Live. We'll see. We are grant administrators slash presenters slash tech assistants slash, so there's, there's a lot going on, but we're gonna try to.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. You can see under the Building Department Code Enforcement there, I just wanna mention it because it's a process that'll probably be a year in the making, but we will begin transitioning from our 2012 slash 2013 building codes to 2018, possibly 2021. We need to do that in order to keep our ranking, it's not a ranking, but ranking, in order to impact the local insurance rates. So, that process will begin over the summer. Not much else, there was a Board of Adjustment, our annual Board of Adjustment meeting. There was a need for one here this past month and we did approve a slight variance for the apartment building going up on Portis Street, so, and that has begun. So, that is about it. Any questions for me?
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, sir.
Kenny's not with us tonight, he's with his son getting ready to, he's got a son?
Yep. The only thing you wanted me to let you know is that the bids for the paint is due tomorrow, not today, he had today's date, so. We'll have bid opening tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, you have my report, not too much to add to that. As Dave mentioned, what we're gonna try to do with the 10:15 session tomorrow is a Facebook Live for those people who can't attend and then also keep it archived on our Facebook page if people wanna watch it later. The 10:15 session is about business districts where the national park is roughly in the backyard and that'll include presenters via Zoom from Vincennes, Indiana, which has George Rogers Clark National Historic Park, and from Hot Springs, Arkansas, where the business district and the national park are pretty much across the street from each other. And one of the presenters, in fact, will be a person who leases property in the national park where they actually have a brewery in there, so, a brew house. So, that should be an interesting session, I believe. Let's see, we also have a representative from Viking Cruise Lines coming in tomorrow to take a look at some sites and locations in the city, getting ready for their tours coming in in 2022. Saturday night is the Movie in the Park with the Museum Learning Center and the library putting that together, along with the City Park of showing Jurassic Park in the park, so hopefully we'll have good weather for that. Because on the visitation numbers for the Welcome Center, that, I was telling Bob on the way in, it's unfortunate we've had a lot of rain, it seems like, on the weekend days lately, so the Saturday traffic hasn't been maybe as good as it would be due to some rainy weather or even chilly weather, but you could see, for instance, on the weekend of April 24th, we only had 49 people through the Welcome Center on that Saturday, but then we had 99 on the Sunday, the next day, just because of the difference in the weather that day. I think I made a note that, yeah, during the first quarter this year, the Museum Learning Center actually had more people come through their place and they're charging admission, so that's showing people are coming even if they're not coming all the way down to our Welcome Center. Are there any questions on anything? I told Happy I'd be here probably through next Tuesday, work on some stuff getting ready for the TTC, TAC meetings. One of those being, with TTC, we're looking at doing the printing on the visitors' guides, so I've got the dollar figures for them to look at. And then the grant opportunity here, the first item in my report talks about the, what the Division of Tourism has released for this year, which is $70,000 in state funds that we have to match with only 25%, so on our end, it'd be $23,000. And so we can put together a campaign, pretty much similar to what we spent last year, it'd be about $93,000 total, and so what we need to do by the end of this month is kind of break down where we want that to go in terms of social media, print, billboards, TV, radio, all those kind of options again, so that'll be a good project to give us some, some good funding to work with next year. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Toby.
Good evening.
Hi.
My report, we cleaned storm drains several times. We trimmed the trees at Creston Cemetery, all the new ones that were planted, branches sticking in roadway. We filled a big hole at Memorial Cemetery that had washed out underneath the old wall on the west side of the cemetery. We put a dirt berm on Cedar Lane to tie in on the curb we put in there to kick the water out. Installed a crosswalk on Pine Street, did some sweeping, patched potholes, and since I wrote my report, we did major asphalt work on Little Rock Road and on Wind Drive. We installed a dogway station and a bench on a buyout property on Main Street along the sidewalk. Mowed and weeded. We cleaned a ditch at Ninth and Washington. And we installed a street plate on a collapsed storm drain at Ninth and Washington that we'll be able to address once school's out. Nothing?
I talked to you about this the other night and stuff, the dump truck bed that you're getting now and stuff was basically put off.
From last year, yeah.
From last year and stuff. I mean, is that basically that bad rust from like salt?
Yeah.
I know we've got the dump trucks sitting outside and somebody brought this to my attention and stuff, is that something we need to look at in the future? Some type of, some place to park them inside?
It would be nice. I mean, we keep them inside during the winter, but, you know, all the moors are in storage then and when we're swapping back and forth with moors, we just park the dump trucks outside.
Right, but I mean, would that help in keeping them?
I mean, the salt is already going and washed by then, it's not, you know, a huge deal, I don't think.
All right. Hi, Gary. May I make a report on the coping stuff? We need to continue to have that on the agenda.
I, I don't think so, especially in light of the new CDC recommendations that came out this afternoon. I think if, if it starts to creep back up again, we just bring it up during some other, yeah, some other time.
Okay. Sounds good. Any committee reports?
I was gonna ask you a question, though. Dang.
No, listen, I just wait for the eyes to turn on me.
Do you know, is there, for the Movie in the Park, is there a rain plan?
I don't have that.
Okay.
Right now, I, the library's been on Facebook and they haven't announced anything.
Okay.
I think it's just a lot, right now, just a lot of crossing fingers, hoping that it stays away, it doesn't look like it's gonna be all good things.
Yeah.
But, just being serious. But, so, yeah, Toby mentioned we got the Movie in the Park this Saturday. And then, otherwise for the park board, nothing really new to report, we've got our meeting on the 24th. But I attended that National Park Trails meeting that y'all of all had told me before.
Yeah.
And basically, it's just a couple of the community planners from the National Park Service, working with the community to develop a trail network throughout the, basically the city limits right now, and there was some discussion about whether it would go beyond that and open some more of the county. There were some county partners on the, on the call as well. I think there was a meeting, I think this was their second meeting that I was attending, so there was a little bit of work done before I ever got privy to the information, but this past meeting was just kind of establishing like a vision, a vision statement for, for the trail network that would promote a more pedestrian and biking accessible community. And then establishing some of the relationships that we wanna kind of incorporate in this, stakeholders, shareholders, whatever you wanna call them. And then, nobody told me there was gonna be homework, but there was. We'll have a meeting in June to further elaborate, but just kind of a piggybacking off of some other conversations that I feel like I've been in around the community with the accessibility and walking trails connectivity and stuff. That's all I got.
There you go. Is there any public comments? See if we have any public comments. We'll hand it out for me if it becomes a closed session. I'm unapproval.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to old business, the second really reading of Bill number 4427, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending the personnel manual as set forth below. Can you have the corrected information appropriate? Unapproval.
I'll second that.
We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Alderman Idman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, Bill number 4427 now becomes ordinance 4348.
Thank you. Takes us to new business and on top of that is bids from the street paving program and the dump truck bids.
We'll start with the repaving program, staff report on that. We sent out four notices, received five bids. City budgeted $245,947. Our low bid was from Vern Bowman Contracting at $293,906, so that exceeds our budgeted amount. So we're doing Cedar, LaPorte, Biltmore, North Forest Street, Hillside, Weiner and Parkwood. What I would like for the board to do is approve the low bid and we'll remove the Parkwood section of it that would reduce it down into our budget amount, below $245,000, and then work with them to see if we can do a smaller area, they need parking lot at the park, a parkhouse, or a little section between KSGM and Matthews Drive. Those are both crumbling anyway, so that might be good spots to get this year. And then we'll have to reassess what we wanna do with Parkwood, but it's gonna be a major project, it's not gonna be $60,000 is what was estimated by the contractor, because they were just gonna overlay.
But then this, this will prioritize Parkwood in the next budget.
We can put that as number one and you're looking at probably $125,000, $150,000 to do that, to do that work.
Especially if it's all concrete.
Yeah, because we're, the idea that either we mill it down instead of raising it up, because I'm worried about stormwater levels if we do that. So we, we either milling down all the concrete or we replace those sections that are bad. And either one's gonna be expensive. We talked about that when we had the asphalt contractors, just milling it all the way down. Well, that's, that's a major cost because concrete's a fairly hard substance, so.
Oh, yeah.
Those, the drilling bits get worn pretty quickly, so I do wanna move forward with the paving project. We have plenty of budget, we broke it down into areas so we can look at what those numbers are, so we know how to make it work. If they don't accept it, then we'll go to the next low bidder.
Yes. Happy, I got one question and stuff, and this may be for you or Gary both, but, you know, as we overlay these streets, we've kind of got away from any major rebuilding of any streets like we've done with Westwood or Maple or.
Rosier.
Rosier.
Portis.
You know, the Port.
Portis.
Portis, some of those, how far in the future do we need to consider still repaving before we can get back to, I guess, a more major rebuild so we can upgrade some of these streets with copings and, you know, a more, quit hitting the hotspots and more of a reconstructive?
So you figure you're gonna have to not double the price, but we would have to increase that price to do that kind of work. So how many streets do you wanna do and how much reconstruction do you want on them?
Well, I'm, I'm looking for how many more are we, you know, because the ones that we're repaving here are terrible. I mean, they're bad streets and stuff, you know, but before we get past that hump to where we're just patching, you know, the really bad stuff to where we could get to a point where we can reconstruct stuff like we have in the past, I mean, I realize it's a whole different thing and stuff, but, I mean, can we come up with an estimate of saying, okay, five years from now, we might be able to do that or?
I would like for what we're paving now to last 10 years and then you would get into that type of project. These streets, some are bad, but I don't see a lot of alligator cracking which would signify that there's, there's major problems underneath. There's more problems on Parkwood than there is on these other streets. They're patched and they've been chipping sealed and there's asphalt, some asphalt below it, but if we don't, if we don't start building some base, then we won't have anything to save.
But you need to come up and look at Maple Drive as one that's re-rebuilt and it just cracked all over the place. And I'm afraid, you know, if we don't get to a point, how can we address those that we've already rebuilt and keep those up and running, because I've mentioned that to Gary a year or two ago and stuff, and, but I mean, it's, at a point in time, we're gonna have a major problem with something we've already rebuilt if we don't get some way to get these under control, but.
If we could double what we have for budget, I think we could, we could do more fast, but we just don't have the budget right now.
I mean, I realize that, but.
And I think we're, I think we're gonna, we're doing a decent stopgap, I think Martin started that, and you're, you're getting at least some smooth pavement out of it and it'll last for, again, it should be for 10 years. And then you're looking at that to do some more major work on. I think, and then at that point, probably five years into this, we need to start thinking about setting money aside to then start working it, if you wanna go to that depth.
Right. Now, as far as this, I mean, I make a motion to approve this. I think we need to get started and sooner the better.
And we'll still be bringing a contract back to the board once we get that finalized, but we just need to approve the.
Second.
You guys are making a motion to go with the recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Okay, second item is the dump truck bed. We, it's in last year's budget, but we held off on purchasing it. We budgeted $14,000, it is a little more than $14,000, but we have money in that line item because we didn't spend as much on the trailer. We expected to spend $75,000 or $7,000, so we ended up spending $3,500. So we do have some money in capital, in the capital line item that we can use for this dump truck bed. We had four bids and this was the low bid that we got from Crans and our recommendation is to accept it.
Gary, I've got one question on this bed and stuff in lieu of what happened the other night where you and I were down there. I mean, do we have safety precautions built into this, so if a driver takes off and the bed's up in the air, we know that or?
Well, we do, we do training on that.
But I mean, I understand there's things you can do in the vehicle to have alarms or something that says.
The trucks all do have a bin up wide of them or body up like.
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much. Takes us to Bill number 4430, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending the Personnel Manual as set forth below.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill number 4430, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending the Personnel Manual as set forth below.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Idman.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, Bill number 4430 now becomes ordinance 4349.
Thank you. First reading of Bill number 4431, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances, Chapter 405, zoning regulations as set forth below. Unapproval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, is there any other business? There is no other business, oh, wait a minute.
Personnel change, can, would it be reasonable to assume that we can make that retroactive for any employees that are currently on workers' comp?
You can make a motion to amend that, amend the motion for the ordinance they just adopted if somebody wants to open that back up.
Yeah, if they wanna open it back up.
Yeah. So you'd have to read it twice again with the, with an amendment saying that you want to make it retroactive with the sick leave policy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, make it specific to just people that are currently on, so we don't overweigh, weigh up retroactive.
Right, right. Let's make it within the last month, but, yeah. Does anybody wanna do that?
I'll make a motion that we, do we revisit Bill number 4430?
At the next meeting?
No, no, we can do it tonight.
I second that.
With nothing in writing, though, I mean, don't we? Okay, what is it gonna specifically be?
So what he's asking for is that we, the sick leave policy that we're now, we're taking out this section where you use sick leave. That we make it retroactive.
For how long?
How far back do you wanna go, 30 days?
A month. A month.
Okay, as long as we have something concrete. Okay.
Good call.
Thank you. All right, so we reopened it, now.
We have a first already, and we need a second?
I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I make a motion that we amend this to make it 30 days retroactive.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
And I make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
I second that.
Okay, we'll have a roll call now, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Alderman Idman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, Bill number 4430 stays, ordinance 4349.
Very good. Now, if there's no other business, if there is no other business, we'll call this, our meeting adjourned. We're gonna go into, we're gonna have a business meeting here, or a business, work session.
Go back on the video and get all that straight. Word for word.
You're doing a great job, Kim.
Oh, boy, here we go, we brought it back.
It's one of those oddities that if you're on the winning side.
We're gonna go on a close, it'll be closed.
You wanna go ahead and start, though?
And then, did you need to say?
Thank you, girl.
That's a good one.
That's what he walked in, well, until the last one, I was like, whoa.
This was long.
Man, we should rest him for it, I'm sorry.
You should have kept it tight, though, really. They're gonna be like this.
Hey, as long as, it's just like, as long as he's on deck, I always ask.
Thank you.
Just in case. Yeah, I do like to recommend.
Yeah.
I have a nice short meeting and then he's coming back in like three hours. Guys, have a good evening.
Thanks, dear.
Thank you.